Mary Jo, would you please call the roll?
Andy Selhards.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Bill Bear.
Present.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Barb Palitsky.
Here.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Here.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Here. Would you please then join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This past Saturday, two Westerville police officers, Anthony Morelli and Eric Doring, were sinuously gunned down in random violence there in the city of Westerville, so I'd like to take a moment to have a moment of silence in their memory. Thank you. All of us owe a great debt of gratitude to all of our first responders and Chief Malki, you know you have our appreciation, so thank you for all you guys do every day. We do have several sets of minutes that we need to approve of this evening. The first is the special meeting held on January the 4th.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Just under my comment in the second line at the end of the first sentence, just to clarify, that I mentioned that another community had, and then it would go into an executive session, and then had the applicants come out into a public session and make a statement. So I'd make a motion, we approve as amended.
Second.
To approve as amended, Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Palitsky.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Abstain.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Yes. The next is a special meeting that was held on January the 8th, 2018. Any comments or questions? Make the motion to approve.
Second.
To approve, Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Palitsky.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Abstain.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Yes. Then was our, the minutes for our regularly scheduled meeting held on January the 8th of that same night. Any comments or questions?
Yes, may I be recognized?
Page 2, the last sentence of my remarks, we just need to correct Mr. Changiri's name.
I'd make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Can I be heard?
Yes.
I talked to Mary Jo, we could go ahead of correction, she took care of it, regards to when I talked to the old representative, it's actually not. I'm sure.
To approve as amended.
Is that under your comments, Andy?
Yep.
To approve as amended, Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Palitsky.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
And the last set is from our organizational meeting held on January the 11th, 2018. Comments or questions? Make the motion that we approve.
Second. To approve, Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear.
Abstain.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Palitsky.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
On Thursday, February 1st, council and the Brooklyn School Board met in a joint work session to discuss the future of recreation fields in the city of Brooklyn. The topic of the discussion was Hurricane Alley and the property on it. We had a productive session about how the land can best be used for both the school and the city. A joint work group consisting of three council members and three school board members will begin meeting shortly about the scope of work that could possibly be done to make the athletic fields better in Brooklyn by jointly using the land along Hurricane Alley. This was just a preliminary meeting, but there is seemingly a unanimous interest by both the school board and city council to work jointly using this property for the benefit of all of Brooklyn. Our next meeting will be held on March the 6th at 6:30 PM, and all the public is obviously welcome to attend. That will be held right here at City Hall. That will be of the three members of the school board, the three members of the city council, and I will certainly keep you apprised of the joint group's work. Also this evening is ordinance 2018-12. This is the authorizing various rules, changes to the codified city of Brooklyn, and I'm just going to go through these very briefly, the rule changes, so that they're in the record now, so everyone knows. The first one will be under Rule 1, organizational meeting, and the new language will read, "The organizational meeting shall be held in council chambers of Brooklyn City Hall on the first Monday in January or as soon as practically thereafter in a time to be determined." The new language says this, "At such organizational meeting, organizational meeting, or as soon as practically thereafter, the council shall elect one council member as president of council, one council member as president pro tem of council, one council member as a member of the city planning commission, and one council member as a member of the recreation board, each to serve for the balance of that year, and until his or her successor shall have been elected unless he or she shall cease in the meantime to be a council member. Notwithstanding the provisions of Article 11, Section 5, or any other provisions of the charter, the council member receiving the most affirmative votes for each of these positions shall be elected." This simply reflects what is already currently in our city charter. The next proposed change under Rule 4, opening procedures. The new rule reads as follows, "The president shall take the chair at the regular hour of calling the meeting and shall immediately call the members to order. The president shall then lead in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an opening prayer. Prayer shall be led by a designated current council member. The president shall then cause the record of preceding session to be disposed of unless otherwise ordered by the council." Next is a proposed rule change is Rule 10, where it says, "The voting upon any ordinance or resolution or most shall be by roll call, and the vote of each council member entertained upon the journal." Every member, entered upon the journal, excuse me. Every member present shall vote on all questions upon the call for a yes or no vote, except that a member may abstain from voting with explanation, when he or she so desires. Further, no member shall vote on any question in which the member is financially interested or required to vote when the same is excused by statute." In that rule change, we added the two words "with explanation," so when a council member abstains from voting, they need to explain why they are abstaining. Next is Rule 14, Order of Business. This simply adds the opening prayer to the Order of Business as the third thing that will happen in the meeting. Next is Rule 22. Also, it's taught, in that rule, it talks about voting, and again, we added the reason when you abstain, to give the reasons for abstentions. And those are all the rule changes that are proposed in that ordinance. We will now proceed with our council meeting. Just as a note, the city offices will be closed next Monday, February 19th, in observance of President's Day. At this time, we will have the public session. If anyone in the audience is in the safe and good and well of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer. Okay. We will now have our reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll begin this evening with the Public Safety Committee. At the conclusion of our last council meeting, the Public Safety Committee met to discuss our continued partnership with the Parma Regional Dispatch Center. Both the police chief and the fire chief laid out the pros and cons from each of their department's perspectives. The committee then had the opportunity to ask questions and give some feedback regarding our current partnership. There are still some growing pains with this partnership, and the situation continues to be monitored by the administration, and of course, this committee. And the mayor mentioned this evening that the administration is still continuing to gather additional information, and I do anticipate that we will have additional meetings in the future to discuss this. And as always, our goal is to provide the best safety services for our residents even with this new Parma Regional Dispatch. We now have the Recreation Board report, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. The next Recreation Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, February 21st, in the Rec Center meeting room at 7:00 PM. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up is the Board of Zoning Appeals, Mr. Kolsar. Mr. Kolsar isn't here. The Board of Zoning Appeals has been canceled, so I'll just read it for you. Lack of applicants. Sorry about that, didn't realize he wasn't here. Yeah, alright. Next is the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did meet this past, or Thursday, February 1st at 6:00 PM. We discussed the following. A request for Copperstone Catering for a portable electric changeable coffee sign at 4630 Ridge Road. There was no representative present, and so this item was deferred. Next was a request from Patricia Napoli for an internally illuminated wall sign for NFL Kings baseball at 8707 Memphis Avenue, and this request was unanimously authorized. A request from Mark Hayes for a freestanding sign for Hayes Equipment Incorporated at 3600 Ridge Road, and again, there was no representative present, so the item was deferred. Next was a request from Francie Quinones for an internally illuminated sign for Like Home Childcare and Educational Center at 7003 Memphis Avenue, and this request was unanimously authorized. Next was a request from Menard Incorporated for site approval for a Menard's retail business at 7700 Brook Park Road. This request was unanimously authorized, and according to the Menard's representative, construction should start sometime this spring or summer, although there is no timeline. This has been a long time in coming, so hopefully we'll see some movement up there in the weather breaks. Then lastly, was a request from Fang Zhao for a new sign package for an Arby's remodel at 5160 Ridge Road, and once again, this request was unanimously authorized. The plan is a total remodel for the store. The commission got a copy of the plans, they look great, so look for that happening here in the near future. The next Planning Commission meeting will be on Thursday, March the 1st at 6:00 PM, and all are welcome to attend. Next up is our school board liaison, Councilman Palitsky.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. I attended a school board meeting on January 23rd, 2018. The music department was highlighted in the student achievement section of the board meeting. Mr. Sullivan from the music department spoke about the accomplishments of some of our students at the Ohio Music Educators Association competition. DeAndre Barkley for oboe concerto, and Nicholas Sapko for saxophone. They were two of many Brooklyn musicians who got top scores at that competition. Dr. Gleikoff recognized that the week of January 15th through 19th is Public Schools Week. He indicated we have much to be proud of in our Brooklyn public school system. Those elements of pride include the following. Pre-engineering and STEM, which is science, technology, engineering, and math programming available to our students. Pre-med opportunities through the HVAC program. University of Akron college credits of Brooklyn High classes. Polaris Career Center offerings for juniors and seniors. Chinese language offered by teachers at Brooklyn High School. Four out of five new students are being enrolled from the E-COT that closed recently. Extracurricular accomplishments. Brooklyn offers 11 sports, and last year had four state tournament qualifiers. Mr. Hennings spoke of the middle school accomplishments. Girls' basketball is great. Wrestling had three first-place wins. Some students will go to Japan on spring break. This is a foreign language trip for our Chinese-language students. Coming events will be the Save Our Schools spaghetti dinner on February 24th from 4:00 to 7:00 PM in the school cafeteria. Tickets are $10 for adults and $5 for students. Tickets can be purchased from all school offices or the Board of Education. Call 485-8100 for tickets. On March 3rd, 2018, Night at the Races will be held at the UAW Hall on Chevy Boulevard. Tickets are available from all school board members for the cost of $25. The musical Beauty and the Beast will be on March 8th, 9th, and 10th. Please support your schools by attending these events. The children are our future. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Palitsky. Next up is the Finance Committee, and I will apologize in advance, we cover a ton of material this evening, and so please bear with me as I go through this. The first of which was a grant request from the solid waste district, and the committee did unanimously approve that grant request. Next was a grant request for the Community Master Plan Update Grant, and this grant would provide funds to update our master plan. We haven't been accepted for that, we are just attempting to receive those funds. Next up was a grant request for Keep America Beautiful, and this grant request is for funds to put in recycle bins inside our city parks. And then lastly, was a recommendation to accept a $500 gift from, let me get the name of the, this here, right, from Snakebike Racing to the Recreation Center. Under our old business this evening, the first item was ordinance 2018-3, and this is establishing the full-time position of clerk of council. This ordinance is in accordance with the charter, changes voted on by the residents in the last election. The clerk of council will be appointed by the finance director, and council will have the option to object to that appointment if we so choose. The salary range for this position will be between $18.273 and $26 per hour. Tonight, we will amend this from the floor. There were some changes that were made after first reading, and so once we amend it, and I'll read those changes in the record, we'll place it on second reading. Next up was ordinance 2018-5, and that's sister ordinance 6, and these are authorizing the mayor to enter a contract with ASME Ohio, Council 8, AFL-CIO Local 3218 Clerical Employees for 2017. And then 2018-6 is for the same unions for the years 2018 to 2020. For the year 2017, this ordinance, if adopted, would approve a one-year rollover of the 2016 collective bargaining agreement with our Administrative Employees Union, as we've done with all the other unions. The administrative staff have agreed to a 0% wage increase for 2017, which is what all other unions have accepted. Also, Article 2, the city is formally recognizing two positions, secretary supervisor slash administrative assistant and law enforcement service clerk that have been added to ASME and were previously part of the OPBA dispatchers union, which has now been disbanded. Then the details for the 2018-2020 contract. This ordinance, if adopted, would approve a three-year collective bargaining agreement with our Administrative Employees Unions that follows the same pattern on wages and healthcare established in our other contracts. Some of the highlights of this agreement are as follows. Article 15, Section 1, has been omitted because the city has not been in the practice of preventing ASME employees from using their sick time during what is a long probational period of two years. Other than those in the Service Workers Union, which have a much shorter probationary period, than all other employees, no city employees are prevented from using sick time during their two-year probation. Then Article 29, ordinances A, B, and C, in keeping with the pattern first established by the police personnel, then jailers, and now fire, ASME personnel have agreed to a 1.75% wage increase for 2018, a 2% wage increase for 2019, a 2% wage increase for 2020. Then some other language makes clear, the city may decide whether to promote an employee to a vacant position within the union on the basis of first experience, skill, and ability, and next seniority. The language in the previous contract required the city to promote solely on whether the candidate met the minimum qualifications for this position. Then, changes confirm the flex time language in the contract, by which all employees are permitted to make their work hours more flexible, depending on their personal and departmental needs, to our current practice across all divisions and departments. Then lastly, this policy requested by the city will enable us to ensure court personnel are appropriately retired on certain court days at minimal expense to the city. The union has the option to meet and confirm with the city on the appropriate policy provisions with respect to those uniforms. Then next up is ordinances 2018-9 and 2018-10, and these are the contracts for the International Association of Firefighters Local 1145 for 2017. Then 2018-10 is for 2018 to 2020. And the ordinance for 2017, if adopted, will approve a one-year rollover at the 2016 collective bargaining agreement with our fire union, as we've done with all other unions, and the union has agreed to a 0% wage increase for 2017, has been consistent with the other contracts as well. And then the contract for 2018 to 2020, if adopted, would approve a three-year collective bargaining agreement with our fire union that follows the same pattern on wages and healthcare established in other contracts. The increase for 2018 will be 1.75%, for 2019 will be 2%, and for 2020 would be 2% as well. Fire personnel also requested, and the administration approved relief from working immediately before they are requested to come to court to testify. Another change was requested, that the administration requesting the fire approve is the modifications to the light duty provisions in order to ensure firefighters work a full 40 hours and will not earning vacation or sick time at a higher rate. And then for all of these contracts, we will go into executive session at the end of our agenda to ask any additional questions, and then after the executive session, we do intend to pass these by emergency this evening at the conclusion of that session. Next up is ordinance 2018-11. This is authorizing declarations of official intent under U.S. Treasury regulations with respect to reimbursements from proceeds of bonds, notes, or other obligations of temporary advances made for payments prior to issuance and related matters. So what this ordinance would do, it's something I don't believe the city's ever done before, but this opens up the option to be able to finance capital purchases for purchases that we've already made, we can go back and finance those if we deem that necessary, we can go back a certain period of time. It just opens up that possibility, doesn't mean we're going to do it, but it is on first reading this evening, and if it does pass, that would open up that opportunity. Next up is ordinance 2018-13. This was authorizing the mayor of the city of Brooklyn to enter agreements with the Director of Transportation, leading to the slope repair along the portion of Ridge Road. If you drive down Ridge Road, right next to Best Buy there, you can see the erosion that's taking place there. We knew this was coming, we've been talking about it for a couple of years, but this ordinance begins the preliminary work on the engineering costs for that project. This year, we budgeted a little over $42,000 for those costs, and this ordinance begins the process with preliminary costs of $14,650. Next up is ordinance 2018-14. This authorizes the administration to accept a grant from the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, and we're eligible for a $39,506 grant for an energy efficiency update or project. But in order to receive these funds, we have to pass an ordinance or a resolution to accept the grant. The administration is still reviewing the possibilities for this grant. That was, that recommendation or that request is due by December the 1st, and of course, the administration will keep a surprise to what, how the process goes on that. Next is 2018-15. This is our service renewal with Bailey Communications. They will continue, if adopted, they will continue being our service provider for all of our maintenance of our network and support, our software, and the annual cost is $51,641.10, and this does mirror the 2017 cost for that same work. Ordnance 2018-16, and this is an ordinance to vacate a portion of Montgomery Place south of Manoa Avenue. We've had many discussions in, both in finance meetings and in council meetings about this, but this ordinance, if adopted, would carry for the city's vacation of a portion of the southern half of Montgomery Place, so that it is no longer considered street property. This portion is currently being used as a driveway for the adjacent home of Manoa, which has no driveway, and has not been historically used as a street. It is in that shape, the city does not want to maintain it, only to have it used as a private driveway. So our intention is to vacate the street and ultimately sell it to the adjacent property owner, who is bearing all the expenses of fixing it up, and this is on first reading. Next up is ordinance 2018-17, and this is authorizing the mayor to enter into a ground lease with Enerlogics Solar LLC for the development, design, installation, and operation of a solar-powered electric generation facility on a portion of land located at 9400 Memphis Avenue. You'll recall that, I believe it was last year, the end of last year, that we passed an ordinance similarly to this for the solar landfill, but if this ordinance is adopted, it will permit the mayor to lease the northern half of the city landfill on Memphis to the same developer of the solar energy plant that we had last year. And this developer wishes to expand the solar panel array to the northern half of the site, which has already been approved by the Ohio EPA for solar fields. The rent will be at the same rate, and would thus ensure that Brooklyn benefits maximally from its operations. And this lease agreement is still under consideration by both parties, and so when that is finished, hopefully by the next meeting, Mr. Butler will have that for us to review. And so, of course, this is on first reading. Next up is ordinance 2018-18. This is authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract agreement with, it's going to be MP2, we'll have to amend the agenda before we discuss the legislation, but that's the supply of our electric energy for the John N. Coyne Recreation Center. Scott Rafferty from North Shore Energy was here again this evening, he was here at the last meeting to discuss the power usage at the Rec Center. Of course, we use a lot of power out there, and this, these prices change daily. And so, the lowest and best price for today was by the MP2 company, and that contract will be for six months, will be a cost of 5.65 cents per kilowatt-hour. This is, this is a .31 cent increase over our previous contract, but still well below the default rate. The default rate will be $6, would be 6.06 cents for the summer months, and 5.83 cents for the non-summer months. And so, it's still a savings, and overall, over that six-month span, it looks like we'll save about $1,800 over the default rate. Then ordinance 2018-19, $1,420,000 in notes. Last year, we had a note balance of $440,000, and each year, we've been paying down 20% of that, $220,000 a year. This is the fourth year that we will do that again. However, we also borrowed $1.5 million last year for the Road on Road project, and the agreement on there as well was to pay down 20% per year, which we do plan on doing this year. So of the $1,940,000 that's currently outstanding, we plan to finance $1,420,000 in 2018, and this is on first reading, and I'm sure Mr. Shaver will talk more about that in his report. Next up is ordinance 2018-20. This is authorizing the purchase of an Affinity walk-behind scrubber from Supply Works for 7176 for use by the Rec Department. Originally, in the 2018 capital budget, this was not in there, however, there was, there were funds set aside for a V-Box spreader for the pickup truck that the Recreation Center decided that they did not need to purchase, and so we're basically swapping the scrubber out for that truck, and the difference is only $176 from what was budgeted. Next is ordinance 2018-21, and the administration is asking that we pass this by emergency this evening. This is authorizing the purchase of ammunition and replacement weapons from Vance's Law Enforcement for $37,861.50 for the police department. So the police department is asking for authorization to purchase these weapons and this ammunition. The new weapons cost is $18,753.75, however, we will receive a significant trade value of $9,960, so the actual cost will only be $87,9375, and the ammunition cost, a little over $29,000, for a total cost of $37,861.50. Next up is ordinance 2018-22, authorizing the purchase of one 2017 Ford interceptor sedan from Bob Gillingham Ford for $41,135.57. This authorizes the purchase of that police car, it was included in our 2018 budget, and again, the administration is asking for emergency to the timing of the estimate for this vehicle. And finally, ordinance, sorry. My mistake, I have it written, that one was not included in our budget, my mistake, I actually had it written here, and I wrote, I wrote it wrong. Alright, so that was not included in our budget for this year. Then lastly is ordinance 2018-23. This is authorizing agreement with the County of Cuyahoga for the replacement of the Memphis Ridge Bridge over CSXT River in the city of Brooklyn. This is a project that the county will be doing with federal funds, but we do have to pass an ordinance this evening, this work is to be done in the year 2020, and the administration is asking that we pass by emergency. And again, I apologize for the length of that report. We'll now move on with the reports of council, we'll begin this evening with Mr. Selhards.
Thank you. Just have one item, congratulations to the young men and women of the Brooklyn High School Hockey Team for becoming the Blue South Division Champions for a second year in a row in the Greater Cleveland High School Hockey League. Good luck tonight, too, as they started playing Brexwell Broadway Heights across the street at 5:30 this evening. They're up 1-0 halfway through the first period. Should they win tonight, they will be playing Sadie Ignatius next, and somewhere down later in the future council meeting, we'll see if we can try to get them up here, up front and honored for their accomplishments this year as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Selhards. Next up is Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. First, I'd like to offer my condolences to the family of Rose Rikenah, who passed away. Rose was the widow of retired firefighter Dan Rikenah, and the mother of Donnie Rikenah, one of our retired service department employees. Their family has been good friends for many years, we have a lot of really great memories. She was really a terrific lady with a lot of spunk. Congratulations to Mary Jo for being selected for the employee spotlight this month. This is well deserved, we appreciate everything you do for us and for the residents. The Brooklyn Community Improvement Corporation had its annual meeting, which is the first Monday in February, so it was February 5th at 6 o'clock at City Hall. We reappointed trustee John Witten and elected officers for 2018. The officers are Mayor Gallagher is chair, John Witten is treasurer, and I am the secretary. Mr. Van Kirk already mentioned that we had a joint work session with the school board. It was a very productive meeting. He already reviewed that we're going to be moving forward with a work group. The council representatives for that work group are myself, Mr. Selhards, and Mr. Van Kirk. I have had some concerns from residents who read the article in the paper, so I just thought I'd take like the top ones, the top negative ones, and hopefully dispel some either rumors or concerns. One of them was if we moved the soccer field, the city soccer fields over to the Hurricane Alley property, what's going to happen to Mark Ward? Is it going to be developed? I think I can say with reasonable certainty that will remain a park, that will not be developed. Some people have asked about the cost and how it's going to be paid for. We don't know the cost or how we would pay for it. We're going to start with having a landscape architect look at the property and come up with a couple different plans as far as options are, and we would have to go from there. Other questions were, are the baseball, I'm sorry, basketball and tennis courts that are currently in Memorial Park going to move over there? The answer to that is no. And another resident asked about- And another resident asked about the cost of hiring the landscape architect. I think we're looking at between $10,000 and $15,000. We'll know more after we have our next meeting, which is going to be March 6. But basically, we have to hire a professional to come up with what the options are and how much it would cost. We don't have that type of expertise in-house. So hiring a landscape architect really does have to be the first step. One of the things I know we'll discuss at the meeting for the next work session is making sure that we are very specific in what the scope of their work will be. I was invited to be a member of the Strategic Planning Committee for the Brooklyn City Schools. And I attended a day-long retreat, which was on February 6. It actually was right here in City Hall in the council chambers. There was a cross-section of the community representative represented. There was teachers, administrators, staff, parents, students, and community members. Over the course of the day, we did develop a vision, mission statement, and goals for the school district. This was really a great group of people who care deeply about our schools. And I just would like to thank everyone who gave up their time and spent the entire day planning for the future of our schools. And I'd just like to make one comment on, I know this is only on first reading this evening. One of the changes in the rules are adding prayer before council. And those who know me personally know that I am Catholic, I'm a practicing Catholic. I come from a family with priests on both sides of the family. I take my religion pretty seriously. I've raised my children in our faith. For me, my religion is really the single most thing that informs who I am as a person. But in my role as an elected official, I'm elected to represent all the residents. It doesn't matter what their faith is, religion, or if they have no faith or religion. Brooklyn is a more diverse community than what it once was. And I know that we have people of many faiths now in our community. And I believe that moving forward with this is going to exclude some members of our community. And so I just wanted to get that out there, that it's not that I'm opposed to prayer. I just believe that as an elected official, it's my job to represent everybody, regardless of their religion or faith. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Next up is Mrs. Volbeer.
Thank you. Individuals and businesses in Ohio have an opportunity to catch a break and save some money through a new tax amnesty program in Ohio. The program begins January 1st and ends February 15th, so you still have some time. It allows individuals and businesses with unreported income or underreported income to come clean with the Ohio tax liabilities. If individuals and businesses pay all delinquent taxes, they will owe no penalty charges and only half of the interest charges they would normally be assessed. The last time the amnesty program was offered was in 2012. If Ohio has already sent a bill to an individual or business about unreported income or delinquent taxes, then those tax liabilities don't qualify for the amnesty program. Not all the taxes qualify, but for the average person, individual income tax does apply. For businesses, employer withholding and sales tax are included. From the state's perspective, it will spend about $1 million to market the amnesty program and expects to bring in about $20 to $25 million, much of which may not be otherwise collected. So from the state's perspective, that's a really good return on investment. During the program in 2012, Ohio collected $30.5 million from 2,700 individuals and businesses. From the perspective of taxpayers, the savings could be huge, especially if they have been remiss for years. And if individuals and business owners know they owe back taxes and have been stressing out about it for months or years, the value of clearing this slate may be massive. Anyone who wants more information on the amnesty program can go to their website, which is www.ohiotaxamnesty.gov, or call the Ohio Department of Taxation. That's 1-800-304-3211. I just wanted to comment about a bill that's out there in the Ohio Senate that I thought might be interesting. It's Senate Bill 106. For the third time in the last several years, State Senator Charlotte Tavares of Franklin County has brought up a bill to ban smoking in vehicles containing minor children. Actually, she is advocating that people be banned from smoking in vehicles containing a child less than six years old. It would not mean jail, but would call for a fine of $500 on a first offense and $750 for each additional offense. This law would prohibit anyone from smoking a cigar, a cigarette, a pipe, or any other lighted smoking device for burning tobacco or any other plant while a child under the age of six was in the vehicle with them. Seven other states have adopted restrictions on smoking with minors in vehicles. Those states actually have thresholds even greater, ranging from eight to 17 years old. The law would be one of strict liability, meaning the drivers couldn't say, gee, I didn't know it was against the law, and get away with it. Over 20% of Ohio adults still smoke, while the national average is about 15%. Dr. Robert Crane, a family physician at Ohio State University, said, "Think about a little three-year-old involuntary passenger in a smoke-filled car." The data are pretty clear that second-hand smoke is harmful. It leads to asthma, ear infections, and other health problems. Senator Tavares stated, "They have no say in getting into an enclosed vehicle with someone who is smoking. Their little lungs breathe deeper, and they breathe faster. We want to be in a leadership position as a state, rather than one of the last states to protect the health and well-being of our children." Hopefully, this time Senator Tavares will prevail. I know it's been roughly about 10 years since it became law that you were not allowed to smoke in public buildings. And even on the campuses of, you know, the Cleveland Clinic or UH Hospital, or any hospital for that matter. And just recently, I know they've done some testing that before you even apply for the jobs at hospitals, they do test you for nicotine. I know in my own business, when they started this 10 years ago, about the smoking in public buildings, everybody was so afraid that our business would go down, that people would not spend money at the bar if they had to go outside and have a cigarette. Just from my own experience, it's never been better. It did not affect anything. They still go out in sub-zero weather and have a cigarette, but it just does not affect it at all. Secondly, I have to make a comment in regards to what Kathy had mentioned about the prayer. I too am Catholic, practicing Catholic. I sometimes consider my son may join the priesthood. My cousin's a sister. We have many relatives. Our whole life grew up with priests. And we went to Catholic grade school, Catholic high school. I've educated the kids, Catholic grade school, high school, universities. Being on city council poses a funny, puts me in a funny position when it comes to prayer. I believe most heartedly that prayer is from the heart. It lifts your mind and your heart to God. And it is a very, very personal thing. I would never, in my life, try to convert anyone, ever try to say my religion is better or anything. I quietly, you know, I love my religion. I never boast about it or anything like that. But I do have neighbors that are candy corner for me in my neighborhood and that are Buddhists. They are very beautiful, wonderful people. And around the corner, I have Muslims. Oh my gosh, I sit and I have Turkish coffee with them. I would feel offensive if I came up here and we said prayer as a group here, and we didn't include everybody. I'm kindly and respectfully asking council to consider this, but maybe consider having a moment of silence before we do the pledge of allegiance. I know there's Cincinnati, their city council, they do it. They do a moment of silence. I think that would be inclusive of everyone. So when we do the moment of silence, pray to who's in your heart and who you want to. That way, I'm able to include my neighbors and whoever. Because I feel that I'm a council person, not just for certain groups. I'm a council person for everybody. I have to be a council person for everybody. So I would ask council to kindly and respectfully to think about this, please, and to think of a moment of prayer, not to say, you know, we don't want to be offensive to anyone. And that's kind of what I think. Lastly, I'd kind of like to spotlight some of the residents. I met a very nice young man a couple weeks ago at Coats for Kids. He was volunteering and helping out there. His name is Brandon Alexander Smith. And he is a senior at Brooklyn High School. And he is the lead character in the play that the school's having, Beauty and the Beast. He is guest on. And he is just a marvelous young man. He's in the chef training program at Polaris. Maybe that's why I liked him. I don't know. But he was very friendly, very nice. And I would just like to say, if you get a chance to go see him, he has a wonderful, wonderful voice. And I hope he would pursue a career, maybe at BW, you know, and their wonderful programs there. But the play is March 8th, 9th, and 10th. And it's Thursday at 7, Friday at 7, and Saturday at 2:00 PM at 7. So if you get a chance, you know, congratulate him. It's very nice that he's doing all that. Secondly, there's another resident that I'd like to spotlight. But actually, he's passed away. But his daughter is here, and she's a dear friend. Her name is Hildy Turek. And her father was Kurt Betcher. He was a foreman in the maintenance department at the Halle's Brothers. Well, I never knew this. Years ago, Halle's Brothers had a band that played, a little orchestra. Well, I loved shopping at Halle's with my mom years ago, and especially when it came around Christmas time, seventh floor, Mr. Jingling. I mean, that was always a highlight as a kid growing up. But I do have a picture. And the great thing about this is, he was placed in the Cleveland Memories Book, this picture of him playing, and he was a Brooklyn resident. Hildy had mentioned to me that her mother always wanted to live in Brooklyn, growing up. And they had to take her house, they lived in Cleveland, and they had to take their house because they were building I-90. And so as a result, when they took their house, they moved to Brooklyn. And it fulfilled her mother's, and Hildy fulfilled her mother's wishes, because that was always one of their wishes. So if you ever get a chance to see that Cleveland Memories Book, we have one of our own, one of our own residents, well, since he's passed away. But, you know, it's nice to know there's a Brooklyn fellow in the book. And that pretty much concludes my report. Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Tansky.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Good evening. I want to read and share with the public something very appalling to me, which are the city tax dollars that were spent on the past union negotiations from December 12, 2012 through July 2014. December 2012, $7,117.85. January 2013, $6,400. February 2013, $8,628.50. March of 2013, $7,686. April 2013, $7,865.50. May of 2013, $8,277.30. June of 2013, $5,453.01. July of 2013, $2,263.10. August of 2013, $1,148.40. September 2013, $2,085.90. October 13, $7,329.40. November 2013, $4,995.70. December 2013, $3,436.60. January 2014, $9,086.53. February 14, $7,90.50. March of 14, $1,258.80. April 2014, $2,728.70. July of 2014, $7,773.10. Total city tax dollars spent in those years is $94,424.89. I have expressed my concerns for years about excessive spending and have voted no in the past on excessive spending in negotiations. We have basically, in my opinion, wasted taxpayers' monies. The big question is, what did the city receive in return in negotiations to make up the $94,000-plus dollars spent? As I've stated numerous times, that we need to keep negotiations in-house. This current administration did just that, and basically saved the city thousands of dollars. My hat goes off to Law Director Kevin Butler and the mayor for their dedication and efforts to not keep wasting tax dollars in negotiations and put the city in the right direction. Again, thanks to both of you and any staff that are involved in this cost-saving measure. I would like to talk about ordinance 2018-17, authorizing the mayor to enter into a ground lease with Enerlogic Solar LLC for the development, design, installation, operation of a solar-powered electric generation facility on a portion of land located at 9400 Memphis Avenue. This ordinance needs to be put on hold in the future until I set up a sustainability meeting to discuss further talks with the committee on how this remainder of acreage can be used to gain the best and most benefit for the city. Some thought to use this acreage in generating power to our city buildings. I also believe maybe another possibility of this land is to be used for private use to generate power in other buildings in the private sector. Possibly utilization of this land in conjunction with the powering of our city buildings could be a great concept on saving and reducing our utility bills. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up is Mrs. Politzki.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Good evening. Saturday afternoon at 12:30, I heard a loud explosion. When I looked out my kitchen window, I saw the large electrical box at the south edge of my property smoldering. As I watched in disbelief, two more explosions occurred. Not knowing what had happened, I wondered who to call, 911 or First Energy. Instead, I went outside and found out that it actually was an auto accident and then passersby already called 911. Our police and fire department response was absolutely great. It appeared that the driver was not seriously injured. Unfortunately, 600 homes, according to First Energy, were without power, some for 12 hours. First Energy did an awesome job of restoring power in such a short time. By seeing the damage, I thought it would take days or even weeks. Thanks to all those who came to our rescue on a cold winter's night. We take so much for granted. As my house got colder, I wondered how the homeless managed to survive in these Cleveland winters. And now, on a better note, the Winter Olympics. Gold medal in snowboarding went to Red Gerard, born in Rocky River, Ohio, and then moved to Silverthorne, Colorado, as a child. He is the youngest at 17 to win a gold medal in snowboarding, and the youngest American to win one in over 90 years. Congratulations to our country. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Politzki. Next up is Mrs. Ryan Shockey.
Good evening. I just want to take the time to thank the Superintendent Blakoff and the mayor for hosting the combined city council school board meeting that has been talked about a few times up here already tonight. I think it was a great first step. And while we have the agenda of Hurricane Alley, we also were able to just get in a room together and have two groups of city leaders talk and, you know, collaborate. And I think it's a great first step, and I hope we continue to do it. That ends my report.
Thank you. Well, now I'm involved with the mayor's report. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. I'd like to pass out my condolences to a couple families. First, the Kerr family. Hank Kerr passed away in the last couple days, and you probably would recognize that last name. His son David and their grandson come up here frequently for our Boy Scout troops that do so much work for our city. Secondly, I'd like to recognize the Wogamouth family and the passing of Anna Wogamouth. She just died this morning. She was a former rec center employee. So my condolences to both families. Most of the items that I had on my discussion were already mentioned tonight. One thing I'd like to pass on, I did pass on this in the finance meeting, is that we will be... we will be holding a fire test to hire a couple of new firefighters. Uh, this test is scheduled for the end of March. The civil service passed this a couple of days ago. Next, I'd like to thank Sue Grodek for applying for the planning commission. Um, I'm, I was happy to see that she applied for this position, and hopefully council passes this, uh, planning commission appointment tonight. Uh, she has a terrific resume, and I'm, I'm glad you're staying involved in the city. Next, I'd like to thank the school for inviting me to the International Festival Opening Ceremonies. Uh, this is a terrific event that goes on there every year. It's been going on for, I think they said about, uh, three or four years. Um, and what they do is they recognize all the different countries and cultures throughout the world, and all the students get involved. Um, I think it's terrific, especially since, uh, recognizing that Brooklyn is in the top 10 in the state of Ohio of foreign-born residents. So just recognizing that some of our students come from different backgrounds and just embracing that, I think is an amazing thing that our school does each year. I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting the State of the City and everyone that had a chance to come out. Uh, I will be taping the State of the City, uh, that will be posted online. Um, and I'd like to thank Andy Seltzer for attending a litter program down in Columbus and bringing back some ideas. Actually, one of the grants that are on today's agenda was from information that he passed on, so thank you, Andy, for doing that. And last thing, I, I know Mrs. Pucci clarified some of the rumors. Uh, every time we get in a room and we talk about parks and stuff, I know this is, uh, near to, dear to people's heart. Um, I, I think the aspect of Markort Park has been brought up a couple of times, uh, most recently in the last election. I know one of the former council members, DeMarco, had brought this up as an idea of building houses. And then again, it was brought up by a school board member, Singer, in the last meeting. Uh, I did make it clear, and that is my position, that I do not think that is a good idea. Um, so, you know, personally coming from me, um, that is not the intention of this administration to go forward in any which way, manner of building homes on Markort Park. Um, and also to clarify, uh, we're looking at doing, uh, this architectural plan, and that is about $7,500. So she was ranging that a little high. Um, $7,500 is what we're looking at going forward. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll now move on with the director's reports. Next up begins this evening with Rec Manager McGinty.
Good evening. I wanted to let everybody know that Brooklyn High School did win tonight 3 to 2 against Brexville Broadview Heights, and they will be returning to the ice to play San Ignatius Saturday at noon. And then, um, we will be having spring learn swim, learn to skate, swim team, and youth soccer registration, and that is currently taking place now. You can register at the Recreation Center or online at www activityreg.com. And our next Friday night public theme night skate is pajama night, and that will be held February 23rd from 8 to 9:15. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. McGinty. Next up is our finance director, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you. Good evening. I just wanted to briefly touch base. Most of my talking points, uh, have already been covered. As far as ordinance 2018-18, the electricity contract for the rec center with MP2, we will be following a very similar process for the city's natural gas contract, um, in either late March, early April, at those meetings to be able to, to solidify those rates and competitively shop those rates for natural gas. The second is, uh, 28, ordinance 2018-19, and, um, this is the schedule of the city's Series 2018 notes. The, uh, the schedule was sent to council. Uh, it's a very similar process to what we did last year, and, uh, the debt service payment of $520,000 for 2018 is, uh, the strategy we discussed during the 2018 budget work sessions. And, uh, finally, ordinance 2018-23, the county project for the Memphis Ridge Bridge that is on first reading, that commits no funds, uh, from the city, that's all federal and, uh, and county funds. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Uh, now before we move into legislation, we have a couple of additions to the agenda that we will need to amend the agenda this evening. Uh, the first of which, under grant request, is the Keep America Beautiful Grant. This was given to us, uh, just prior to, uh, our meeting. And, uh, this grant would, again, as I mentioned earlier, will be used to, uh, put recycle bins, um, in all of our parks. And then the second item, uh, is ordinance 2018-18. As you can see on your agenda this evening, the slot is blank for the name of the supplier. And as I mentioned in my, uh, report, that supplier would be MP2. So the ordinance would read, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract slash agreement with MP2 as supplier of electric energy for the John M. Coyne Recreation Center and Natorium.
Move to amend the agenda as stated in the record.
Second.
To amend the agenda, Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzki?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shockey?
Yes.
Ryan, Ryan Van Kirk?
Yes.
Mr. Van Kirk, may I be recognized before we move on? I just want to provide a little bit of context, um, to Mr. Tansky's comments about spending, uh, taxpayer dollars on outside law firms. Um, the first is, we all appreciate Mr. Butler's efforts, and I've expressed that to him personally in being able to keep the negotiations in-house this time. Um, we're all appreciative of his efforts. I know it, it took a really long time, um, but he was successful in keeping them in-house, and we appreciate that. Um, but to provide a little context, um, a couple things. First of all, this was over, I think it was about a, um, a two-year period negotiating, and it, it was a bit of a different economic climate, but there were also some items that the city pushed for, and we took to fact-finding and even to arbitration, and that is always going to cost more, um, when you are pushing issues either, either to get, um, something or even if it's to get something clarified for the future. Um, but we also had a law director who was not experienced previously in negotiations. And when you're a city and you're negotiating with five unions, there's an obligation of everybody on council to make sure that the city is adequately represented in those negotiations, and then of course also going to fact-finding and, um, arbitration. So, you know, in all my years on council, I haven't served with anybody who doesn't take very seriously when it comes to spending taxpayer dollars. But, um, you know, sometimes it's unavoidable. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I have a quick, quick comment. I have no problem spending the money, but we should have a law director in place, number one. That should be taking orders in negotiations so we don't end up with this excessive spending that I was against from day one. Two, when we've taken stuff to arbitration and stuff, and I believe we've gotten, for the $94,000, I don't think we've gotten language out of that contract to make up that $94,000. And I believe, Mr. Butler, how many years do you have in negotiating union contracts? Seven. Seven years of negotiating union contracts? Yes. So that means that we should have put somebody in place, either another law director or some kind of position to stop the excessive spending, $94,000, especially if we didn't get anything out of it. I believe we went to arbitration and lost that too? I believe we went to arbitration and we didn't go anywhere with it. So, when money is spent, I believe it has to be watched more closely than we just hand out paychecks, as I look at it. And for what the mayor did here, and the law director that, she has done a great job of not having bills like this. So, you know, I'll always say when somebody doesn't do a job, I always come out and will say, but I'm going to tell you something. For these negotiations to go down, go down the way they went down and not have these kind of bills, that's impressive to me. Because other cities have rec bills too, and you're right, they have rec bills though, because the law director may not have negotiated or did not have negotiated. But people have to be in place within that administration not to have this going.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Uh, I agree with you, and because of the lack of experience, I did not support the confirmation of the law director.
I, I understand, and I remember.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we'll now move on with, uh, requests this evening. The first of which is a grant request from Mr. Verba. Uh, members of council, I respectfully request authorization to apply for CCSWD 2018 Community Recycling Awareness Grant, um, that is the Soloway Waste District. Uh, the grant will be used to sponsor a shred day on April 21st at the rec center from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Since the main purpose of the grant is awareness, we must include an education component, component, so we'll also produce 4,000 magnets, which will list materials that we currently recycle. The cost of the shred day magnets will be $3,150, and there's no city match required. And that comes from our, uh, Public Service Director, Mr. Verba.
Move to authorize the grant application.
Second.
To authorize, Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzki?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shockey?
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk?
Yes.
Uh, next up is a grant request for the Community Master Plan Update Grant. Uh, this is, uh, the Kailua County has allocated $150,000 to the Community Master Plan Update Program, uh, for this year, uh, for year four. The timeframe of order will be July 2nd to December 31st of 2019.
Can I just make one comment?
Sure.
Just, I wanted to say, coming from the urban planning background, um, I think this is a great opportunity for our residents and stakeholders to come together and develop an updated plan for, um, Brooklyn's future.
Move to authorize the grant application.
Second. To authorize, Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzki?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shockey?
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk?
Yes.
Uh, next is a, a letter, or memo from Mary McGinty for the Keep America Beautiful Grant for recycling bins to parks, athletic fields, and waterfront parks. I'm respectfully requesting authorization to apply for the 2018 Keep America Beautiful Grant Recycling Infrastructure Grant Program in partnership with Dr. Pepper and Snapple Group. The grant will be used to incorporate recycle bins in our parks. I believe 25 is the number that we are looking to get. We don't have a price on, a price on this yet, but there is no match for the city.
Move to authorize the grant application.
Second.
To authorize, Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzki?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shockey?
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk?
Yes.
And, uh, lastly, is an acceptance letter, uh, or requesting of acceptance from Ms. McGinty. I respectfully request that the mayor and council accept a donation of $500 from Snakebite Racing, and this will be used at the Recreation Center.
Move to accept the donation.
Second.
To accept, Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzki?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shockey?
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk?
Yes.
And then, uh, we have a council confirmation. Dear members of council, I'm requesting council confirmation on the appointment of Sue Grodek to the City of Brooklyn Planning Commission. She will fill the term of Meg Ryan Shockey, which will expire on December 31st, 2023. Thank you sincerely, Kathmande Gallagher, and she did include, uh, Mrs. Grodek's, uh, letter. And I will, uh, make the motion that we confirm the appointment.
Second. To confirm the appointment, Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzki?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shockey?
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Grodek, and welcome. Glad you're joining us. Uh, next up is ordinance 2018-3, and we do need, need to amend this, and so I will read that amendment into the record. Underneath Section 1, uh, the new, Section 1 will read as follows. There is hereby created the full-time position of clerk of council, who shall perform the duties consistent with Article 5, Section 3 of the Charter of the City of Brooklyn. All additional applicable law and all position description is modified from time to time. The position shall be unclassified in accordance with the rules promulgated by the Civil Service Commission. The clerk of council shall, shall serve in a fiduciary role, both the financial director, who shall have the power to appoint and remove the person in this position in accordance with Article 5, Section 3 of the Charter and Council. Section 2, Exhibit A of ordinance 2016-88, establishing wages of non-bartering unit positions in the city, is hereby specifically amended to provide for the clerk of council position in accordance with the attached Exhibit A. And as I mentioned in my financial report, the clerk of council, uh, pay range, salary range will be from $38,784 to $54,080, and the hourly range is $18.273.26. And this is on second reading.
Move to amend.
Second.
To amend, Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzki?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shockey?
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk?
Yes.
Uh, the next one ordinance is ordinance 2018-5, 6, 9, and 10. Uh, we are going to go into executive session to discuss these, and then the plan is to come back out and to vote on them, so we will, uh, move those to after our executive session. Uh, next up is ordinance 2018-11. This is authorizing declarations of official intent under U.S. Treasury regulations with respect to reimbursements from proceeds of bonds, notes, or other obligations of temporary advances made for payments prior to issuance and related matters. It's on first reading. Ordinance 2018-12, also on first reading, amending various rules of council codified pursuant to Section 121.01 of the codified ordinance in the City of Brooklyn. Ordinance 2018-3, also on first reading, authorizing the mayor of the City of Brooklyn to enter into agreements with the director of transportation relating to slope repair along a portion of Ridge Road. Ordinance 2018-14 on first reading, authorizing all actions necessary to accept Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, or NOPEC, energized community grants. Ordinance 2018-15 on first reading, authorizing the mayor to enter into a service agreement renewal with Bailey Communications Incorporated to provide maintenance of network, software support, and other related services for the City of Brooklyn. Ordinance 2018-16 is on first reading, an ordinance to vacate a portion of Montgomery Place south of Manoa Avenue. Next up is ordinance 2018-17. This is authorizing the mayor to enter into a ground lease with Enerlogic Solar LLC, the development, design, installation, operation of a solar-powered electric generation facility on a portion of land located at 9400 Memphis Avenue. This is on first reading, but I'm going to make the motion that we defer this to the Sustainability Committee.
Second.
To defer, Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzki?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shockey?
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk?
Yes.
Next up is ordinance 2018-18. We do hope to pass by emergency this evening. This is authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract agreement with MP2 as a supplier of our electric energy for the John M. Coyne Recreation Center and Natorium.
Introduce by all, suspend the rules as amended.
Second.
Um, I, I think we also have to fill in the six months and the dates too.
Yeah. Do I need to read it again? I read it in my report, Mr. Butler. Should I read it again, just to be sure?
Go on.
Okay. Right, so underneath ordinance 2018-18, under the title, it'll say, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract agreement with MP2 as supplier of electric energy for the John M. Coyne Recreation Center. And it'll say, whereas the city saves significant amount of money on the cost of electricity during the next six months by contracting with MP2. Under Section 1, the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into a contract agreement for six months commencing on or about, I'm not sure what the, whatever it is.
Do we know the date?
Today? February 12th, 2018, by contracting with MP2. The mayor is hereby authorized to enter into a contract agreement for six months, oh, I already read that, sorry. All right, uh, with MP2 as a, as a retail electric service provider to first electricity in such quantity as needed by the John M. Coyne Recreation Center and Natorium at a cost of, I believe it was five?
5.65.
Thank you. 5.65 cents per kilowatt hour.
And I made the motion, introduce by all, suspend the rules as amended.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politsky?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
To adopt, as amended, Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politsky?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Next up is ordinance 2018-19 is on first reading, $1,420,000 in notes. There is a fiscal officer certificate that has to be read at one of these readings, so I'm just going to read it now on first reading. Says this to the council of the City of Brooklyn, Ohio. A fiscal officer of the City of Brooklyn, as fiscal officer of the City of Brooklyn, I certify in connection with your proposed issue of $1,420,000 in notes. The notes to be issued in anticipation of the issuance of bonds, the bonds, to pay cost of reconstructing Road on Road and Road on Alley, the improvement. That, number one, the estimated life or period of usefulness of the improvement is at least five years. Number two, the estimated maximum maturity of the bonds calculated in accordance with Section 133.20 of the Revised Code is 20 years. If notes in anticipation of the bonds are outstanding later than the last day of December, on the fifth year, following the year of issuance of the original issue of the notes, the period in excess of those five years shall be deducted from the maximum maturity of the bonds. Number three, the maximum maturity of the notes is June 7th, 2037, which is 20 years from June 7th, 2017, the date of issuance of the original notes issued for this purpose as dated February 12th, 2018. That comes from Director of Finance, David Schaefer. And that is on first reading. Next up is ordinance 2018-20, authorizing the purchase of an affinity walk behind scrubber from Supply Works for $7,176 for use by the Recreation Department.
Introduce by all, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politsky?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance 2018-21, authorizing the purchase of ammunition and replacement weapons and parts from Vance's Law Enforcement for $37,861.50 for use by the Brooklyn Police Department. Any comments or questions? Introduce by all, suspend the rules.
Second. To suspend the rules, Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politsky?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance 2018-22, authorizing the purchase of one 2017 Ford Interceptor sedan from Bob Gillingham Ford, along with ancillary equipment and decalng for use by the Brooklyn Police Department for a total cost of $41,135.57. Any comments or questions?
No, I just think we should specify that this is coming out of two different special funds. Introduce by all, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politsky?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
And lastly is ordinance 2018-23, authorizing agreement with the County of Cuyahoga for the replacement of Memphis Ridge Bridge, number 00.62, over CSXT Railroad in the City of Brooklyn.
Introduce by all, suspend the rules.
Second. To suspend the rules, Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politsky?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Yes. We do anticipate now going into executive session. Once executive session is over, we will come back and take votes on ordinances 2018, 5, 6, 9, and 10, and then we will conclude our meeting.
I do want to adjourn to executive session with the mayor, the law director, the finance director, for the purposes of discussing labor negotiations.
Second.
To adjourn to executive session, Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.